Buenos en Hafa Day. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling its public hearing to order. The time is now 9:02 a.m., Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. In compliance of the open government law, notices of today's hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post, broadcasted on KUAM, provided via email to senators, stakeholders, local media, and posted on the Government of Guam Public Notice's website on Monday, August 28th for the five-day notice and Sunday, September 3rd for the 48-hour notice. The purpose of today's hearing is to receive testimony on two items: Bill Number 151-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Speaker Theresa Chirlahi, and Senator Chris Barnett. It's an act to add a new chapter, 54(c)(2), Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to prohibiting the production and use of nuclear energy on Guam. The second item is to hear testimony on Resolution 93-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, relative to joining the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas, Republic of Balao, other Pacific nations urging the Government of Japan to consider alternatives to the discharge of more than 1 million tons of contaminated water from the Fukushima Daiichi Nuclear Disaster into the Pacific Ocean. The rules of conduct are as follows: Those called to testify will be in order, beginning with those that confirm in advance with my office on Friday, September 1st, followed by the order and the sign-in sheet. I ask that all written testimonies be submitted to my staff beforehand so copies can be disseminated. Those providing oral testimony must speak into the mic. You could press the button and there should be a red light. And please state your name and your organization, if relevant, for record-keeping purposes. Senators will be given opportunity at the end of each panel to ask questions, and questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. And now to begin our agenda. Bill Number 151-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Speaker Theresa Chirlahi, and Senator Chris Barnett. It's an act to add a new chapter, 54(c)(2), Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to prohibiting the production and use of nuclear energy on Guam. I'd like to open with some brief remarks. So the purpose of Bill 151-37 is to ban the use of nuclear fission power plants, small modular reactors, or nuclear microreactors in the production of energy for Guam, as well as to ban import, importation, use of radioactive active material, or disposal of radioactive material on Guam. So the problem of nuclear energy, there are several issues. So it's expensive to build. Construction of a new nuclear plant can take anywhere from five to 10 years, costing billions of dollars. Nuclear plants... So the cons, the lifetime of the plant is... So although energy can be... Sorry, let me just start again. So the purpose of this is, so the problem is it costs billions of dollars to build, anywhere from five to 10 years. The risk of accidents, so we're very aware of Chernobyl, Three Mile Island, Fukushima, Daiichi, are disasters that nobody wants to experience ever again, under any circumstances. However, accidents do happen. In all of these major nuclear incidents, it was human error or a natural disaster that led to the downfall of power plants. And there's no way to control or prevent natural disasters. And since nuclear energy is operated by humans, it's unrealistic to expect that the possibility of an accident does not exist. Another problem is radioactive waste, even though nuclear energy production doesn't emit what's called fossil fuel emissions. It does produce radioactive waste that has long lifespans, and this must be secured, stored securely so it doesn't pollute the environment. Radioactive waste from nuclear energy production is quite dangerous. It's also been said that nuclear power is renewable, which it isn't. It relies on power from uranium, and which has huge impacts to the environment. Uranium is limited, and the risk will eventually run out, it's estimated 80 years. The risk that uranium produces, so the pollution can be emitted into our environment through wind, water, and it has to be mined, synthesized, and then activated to produce energy, and this is a relatively expensive process. It also is a source of environmental justice for those communities where mining occurs. And of course, the impact to the environment. In addition to the waste that they produce, nuclear power plants create other impacts. For example, the mining and enrichment of uranium are not environmentally friendly processes, and it leaves behind radioactive particles which can cause erosion and pollute nearby water sources. So one thing we've been seeing is there's a huge push within, I think particularly, it's seen, so nuclear power is now seen as a means to curb climate change, but with that, there is huge problems associated with contamination. And, you know, judging from the history of the Pacific, we've been not only in the front lines of climate change, but we have in the front lines of nuclear contamination, from the multiple testing, nuclear testing in the Pacific, and now with the dumping in our Pacific Ocean. And, you know, as indigenous people, this is a cause of concern because for thousands of years, we have relied on the oceans for our livelihoods, and to see it being destroyed and being contaminated over 30 years, so contaminated for many, many decades, you know, it's part of our responsibility to ensure that what is given us life continues to do so. So just aside, notice of today's public hearing were sent to GPA, General Manager John Benavanti, as well as the Administrator Michelle Lastimoso, who's here today. So now I'd like to call upon, if anybody would like to testify on Bill 151, if you could please have a seat at the table. So feel free to come to the front. So we have Maneka Flores, Ron McNinch, and I didn't see anybody else sign up, GuamipA. And if there's anybody else that would like to provide testimony. All right, so maybe if I can just start with the... Yeah, we can start with GuamipA first, I think, just to get your input as far as the permitting process. So Administrator, welcome. Good morning, and if you can...
Good morning, Senator. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide testimony. Upon review of the proposed legislation, GuamipA finds that Bill 151-37 seeks to add a new chapter to Division 2 of 10 GCA Chapter 54 as the Nuclear Energy Prohibition Act of 2023, relative to prohibiting the production and use of nuclear energy on Guam. At this time, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency is unable to ascertain its exact impacts to the extent that Bill 151-37 may impose on the island should the proposed legislation become law. As a regulatory agency, GuamipA can reasonably assert the following. One, according to the United States Nuclear Regulatory Commission, or the NRC, Guam does not operate any nuclear reactors or fuel cycles. Two, at this time, Guam has not expressed interest in establishing programs to assume NRC regulatory authority under the Atomic Energy Act of 1954 as amended. Three, at this time, Guam may be considered as a non-agreement territory with only limited jurisdiction over radioactive materials which are not derived from nuclear reactors, inclusive of X-ray equipment and naturally occurring radioactive materials. Four, should the bill become law, it would deter any governor's attempt to become an agreement territory, as this process is initiated by the governor via a letter of intent to the NRC stating that Guam plans to request an agreement, including a comprehensive request, which includes supporting legislation, regulations, and program description, and a formal request where the governor certifies that Guam has an adequate program. Five, Guam would have to commit millions of dollars to the NRC for the initial process, technical assistance, waste management, and annual administrative licensing fees. Six, radioactive waste is prohibited from the disposal at the Lazon landfill. Seven, we are certain about the bills, we are uncertain about the bill's impact on DoD's nuclear programs on Guam, as a DoD has an agreement that differs, that differs, rather, from the NRC's authority over civilian and commercial applications. At best, our capacity to manage spent fuel or load to high-grade waste generated from fission-based nuclear-powered reactors can be described as challenged, once the island, since the island lacks the proper personnel necessary to manage civilian and commercially based nuclear energy power production. The agency has not had enough time to form a position as to supporting or opposing this bill. We will state that nuclear energy production on Guam would be serious business and can lead to serious environmental catastrophe, with nearly irreparable damage to the island if we do not have the proper capacity to manage every element of this program. Thank you, Senator.
All right, thank you, Administrator. Next, I'd like to call upon Maneka Flores from PLSR.
Hafa Dayang, good morning, Senator. Thanks so much for having this hearing today and for introducing this much-needed legislation to protect our island and all future generations of Guahan. My name is Maneka Flores, and I'm a member of Potayla Texansayver Tidian, and we're here today to testify in support of this bill. Nuclear energy is not the way to a green and peaceful world. Nuclear energy generates huge amounts of toxic waste that will remain in our environment for several thousand years. And if we look in anywhere in the world where nuclear energy is being used, no government has ever resolved how to safely manage nuclear waste. That has never been something that any government in the world has successfully been able to manage. Nuclear energy is vulnerable to natural disasters and military conflict. The structures containing radioactive materials are not designed to withstand this type of attack or shock. Nuclear power is also a water-hungry technology. And, you know, Greenpeace International actually funded, actually, Greenpeace France actually funded a really important report called "The Global Crisis of Nuclear Waste." They commissioned this report, and I'm going to submit it as part of my testimony. But this 100-page report really goes into the ongoing crisis of the countries who are dealing with nuclear waste around the planet. And this is a quote taken from that report. "Nuclear waste is a real scourge for our environment and for future generations, who will still have the responsibility of managing it in several centuries." So the issue of nuclear waste is so massive, we don't even have the technology and the resources available where it's already in operation in certain parts of the world to deal with it adequately. And so what that's going to do is leave the mess for many generations to clean up. What we're doing is we're banking on future generations to find the technology and the resources, when we can just prevent the harm from happening in our island right now. There's several challenges, and I'm happy to hear that GuamipA is already identifying some of these challenges, especially the regulatory challenges, which we do not have the capacity to deal with. There's also waste stream challenges. You've mentioned storage for nuclear waste has been proven inadequate and perilous. Right now, if we look at sites around the world where it's being buried, where nuclear waste is being buried, you know, the deep geological deposits are extremely hazardous, and especially for us near our aquifer. Our sole source aquifer provides our island with 85% to 95% of our island's drinking water, and any sort of deposit of radioactive or nuclear contaminated waste on Guam would directly risk the safety of our aquifer. Decommissioning a single nuclear reactor can take up to 20 years, and most countries only are able to plan for short-term strategies, around 40 to 60 years, again leaving the burden for future generations. There's also a greater proliferation risk, in which folks can use nuclear fuel or other material to generate weapons, and the theft of these materials for the purposes of proliferation is a real security risk. There are several other costs, several other things. Nuclear energy is too expensive. The cost of generating solar power ranges from $36 to $44 per megawatt. And the World Nuclear Industry Status Report said, while onshore wind comes to $29 to $56 per megawatt, nuclear energy costs between $112 to $189 per megawatt. And so the costs are not, it's costly, it's harmful to the environment. We have no way of safely managing any of the harmful waste that nuclear power would generate for the island. We don't have the regulatory procedures in place to protect us. And also not to mention that, you know, nuclear energy itself presents, the fuel cycle itself presents large volumes of radioactive waste that will remain in our environments for several thousands of years. And just to give you an example, you know, French countries have exported nuclear waste to Siberia, dumping barrels in unsafe conditions, completely exposed to the elements. And this is not something that's happened, like, in the 80s. This is something that's happened just in the last couple of years. And nuclear energy is not, and will never be, green energy, clean energy, and a safe alternative for the island and the people of Guahan and anywhere else in the Pacific. So thank you very much, Senator Cezanne Mossi.
Cezanne Mossi, Maneka, for that testimony. Now I'd like to call upon Ron McNinch.
Thank you, Senator, and certainly thank you to the Guam Legislature for this hearing. My name's Ron McNinch. I'm talking in my capacity today as a private citizen in general. About 15 years ago, I worked with the Guam Homeland Security Citizen Corps Director, and also I worked on radiological response and was trained by FEMA in this area. I look at this as a public policy emergency management angle in general terms of my comments. First, I oppose this bill, and I also encourage the governor to veto this bill if it's passed. What I'm concerned about is that nuclear power is the most highly regulated type of power in the United States. In the last 70 years, there have been technological improvements. Most of the cases cited in the resolution deal with places that had 70-year-old technology in them. In general, waste storage is handled by the federal government in the United States. I think in general, there needs to be more science and technology added to this discussion than I see in this particular bill. And nuclear power should be looked at as a potential solution along non-ideological lines, and many of the discussions that are being proffered by various groups are very ideological and very polarizing. And I think that more general consensus-oriented policymaking needs to be used in this particular policy area. And I don't believe Bill 151 reflects a thoughtful process along those lines. And I do understand it's a novel initiative, but I think a lot more discussion needs to be done on it. Finally, the Government of Guam, if, you know, if we had nuclear power on Guam, the Government of Guam would not be handling any sort of nuclear waste. It would probably be done, all else equal, through the national system. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present today.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to testify that came a little late? All right.
Actually, Senator, may I add a comment, please, to, just to respond to Mr. McNinch's testimony?
Yes, you may.
Something else that we need to consider, you know, first of all, that's all a hypothetical situation, should Guam have nuclear-generated power here. We could look at the hypotheticals for ways that, you know, in his case, he's arguing that it could work, but we don't, we don't, that's a hypothetical. We could look at several places where nuclear power generation does not work, where people are struggling to clean up nuclear waste. I mean, the bill itself does actually mention several nuclear catastrophes that have happened historically, including Chernobyl and Fukushima, not to mention also the largest nuclear accident in the United States, which, you know, just took place quite recently. These are things that are, these lands and communities have never recovered from, and they've cost upwards of billions of dollars. You know, also, we have to take a look at the conflicts that are happening in the world. So I'm sorry, that was Three Mile Island in Middletown, Pennsylvania, costing, that was in 1979, it cost about a billion dollars. The Chernobyl Nuclear Power Plant in 1986 has cost more than $200 billion. Fukushima Power Plant costs $7 billion annually, and that's $7 billion annually. That's not even a one-time cleanup bill. These, nuclear power generation has a track record of accidents and contamination, and if we even look at what's happening with the conflict with Russia and Ukraine right now, Ukraine has 15 commercial nuclear reactors, including Europe's largest plant, which is at risk of catastrophic damage that can render vast areas of Europe uninhabitable for decades, for decades. And so that is real science. That's real science and actually real history that shows that nuclear power generation is dangerous and causes permanent destruction, permanent contamination, for many people, many communities, countries around the world. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We do have another guest on the panel to present, Mr. Celestial.
Buenos en Hafa Day. Chairwoman Sabina Perez, and beautiful lady over there, Senator Joanne Brown. And people of Guam, my name is Robert Naumalik Celestial. Testifying on myself, for myself, and I am in favor of this bill, it is a prevention that needs to be done for Guam. It's a prevention because there's issues that haven't been brought up yet, and that is to mobilize radioactive reactors in military outposts worldwide. A lot of people don't know that. As an atomic veteran, 40 years later, the Department of Defense decided to give us a medal, and I just received it this year, and it's an Atomic Veteran Medal, for what we did in the Marshall Islands in 1977 and 1980 without our real knowledge of what we were doing out there in the Marshall Islands, where we detonated 67 nuclear and hydrogen bombs. And also, the people of Guam were inundated with nuclear fallout from 1946 to 62 without our knowledge, and that's why we have a lot of illnesses and sickness here in Guam, and a lot of deaths that were not diagnosed properly, I believe. And this is prevention. It's prevention for our people of Guam, because a lot of people, even after Malwar, are struggling. They're struggling because they're worrying about how they're going to pay their bills, how they're going to put food on the table. These are issues they're most concerned of. It's people like Maneka and other people here, and others that want to be here, but can't because they're at work, to testify, to say, this is a good bill for the people of Guam to prevent things like this to happen, because I could tell you a story, I could tell you my story. Out of 8,000 military and civilian personnel stationed out there, only 300 of us are alive today. 300, that's accounted for, my comrades. And all of them have illnesses like cancers, tumors, bone disease, all these issues that we were exposed to when we were doing our duty in the military. And for our people, it's right what you're doing, is you're protecting the people of Guam that are unaware of issues that are coming down the pipeline, issues that we know. And so I'm here that I'm glad that you're preventing something serious that's going to happen, that might happen, and that this law will prevent. You know, I just heard the EPA say, they don't know how they're going to stand with or without, because they don't have the information, because the information hasn't been brought out yet. But there is information, if you go out and look for it, that already has been established what different companies are doing. You're talking about INL, BWXT, you're talking about the play issues, so many out there that already are in the news of what they plan on doing. So this is prevention, prevention to protect our people, and I stand in full support of this, and I hope and pray that our people would understand that we don't need nuclear energy. And it's more than nuclear energy. You're talking about fission and fusion, and it's different because nuclear energy is fission. And then you have the nuclear subs, you have the nuclear carriers, you have nuclear bombs. I believe that Guam has the greatest arsenal in the world of nuclear weapons, but if you look at the records, it doesn't say nuclear weapons. It says non-nuclear weapons. I've seen the records and declassified documents, the way they ship it to Guam. It says non-nuclear because you have two components, and when you ship it, it's non-nuclear because it's not put together. But once you put it together, it becomes nuclear. A lot of people don't know that, and that's why I'm presenting it to you today, is that even though it says non-nuclear, but once you put it together, it becomes nuclear. But that's not the issue. The issue is nuclear energy. We don't want to have no nuclear plants, nothing to... Everybody knows the story. You know what happened to Chernobyl? And the thing that gets me about Chernobyl is that it was just a power plant, and it destroyed the areas around it, the villages, the people that suffered. It's only one, and it gets me is that it detonated 67 nuclear bombs out there in the Marshall Islands, and nobody really talks about it, and our people were affected. We have a bill in Congress right now, Senator, that hopefully it'll pass through the NDAA in the House, in the Reconciliation Committee right now, to include Guam, Colorado, Idaho, New Mexico, uranium miners, and other states to be compensated for our exposure to nuclear fallout. So I commend you and all the senators to prevent something like this, that it's so common sense. People's lives and our next generation's going to suffer if we don't do this. So thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Celestial, for your testimony. Yes, and basically, your experience, you know, speaks volumes to this, on what are the impacts, and I think it definitely informed this bill. Because what this bill, just to be clear, this bill basically would prohibit nuclear energy production on Guam. So currently, it doesn't exist, and as you heard from GuamipA, it's almost impossible, considering the amount of steps it would take to get to be here. And so, like you said, it is a common sense bill. You know, it doesn't exist, now is the best time to prohibit it. And, you know, especially when we are dealing with the aftermath of many contamination, you know, the air contaminants coming to Guam, which you have brought to light, you know, the downwinders. And that wasn't the only thing, right? The washing down of vehicles here. So what this bill specifically does, it prevents nuclear energy production, and... And especially now, you know, Guam, we are, we just came out of Malwar, you know, there's earthquakes, you feel earthquakes pretty regularly here, so the chance of a natural disaster leaking, causing the leak of nuclear radioactive material. We know these radioactive materials last a long time. You know, the half-life of uranium is really long. It outlives us. And especially, you know, if it does cause cancer, it would definitely outlive us the life. But, so I just, I want to also recognize Senator Brown, thank you for being here. All right, so I'd just like to open up questions to my colleague here, if she has any questions for the panel. Senator Brown, if you have any comments or questions.
I certainly appreciate all of you taking the time to come to testify today, certainly also to our young members of the audience for being here, obviously. You know, this particular bill is looking not just at where we are, but certainly the future of our island and the future of our young people that are coming up, and I appreciate this. I mean, we're challenged, we're very challenged in the world today, because I'll tell you, the longer we're here, the more damage we collectively do. And wanting to ensure the safety and well-being of our environment is important, because we've actually seen over the years the impact, and I appreciate you, Mr. Celestial, for coming again and reminding us the health issues, and certainly inherent in our own bodies, we're going to have health issues as we get older. But the prevalence, the high numbers that we're seeing, particularly of cancer among our people, we've all experienced it within our own families, the reality of what has happened as a result of both the war itself and certainly the concerns you've brought up with the detonation of the nuclear weapons and testing that happened in the Marshall Islands, and the impact of that coming to Guam. That's not what we want to see for the future. I mean, we certainly have to already address the quality of our life now and the environmental issues that still remain to be cleaned up on the island. Some of it, we've been able to contain, some of it, they've not been able to fully remove because they don't have the technology to do it, or it's excessively cost prohibitive. Of course, we can argue that, but, you know, the military has been funding a significant amount of cleanup over the years, but not all of those sites are fully cleaned up. And we are going to be challenged many, many, many years in the future beyond our own lifetime to address what has already happened in the past, least of all, what are we going to do today and moving forward? So certainly, anything we can do to address that, it's important for us, you know, with regards to policy, to look at that. But I appreciate your testimony. I don't have any questions. I think you've been very clear in articulating what your issues and concerns are, and it's certainly appreciated to add that to our record. For all our colleagues that are not here this morning, they can at least review the transcripts of this hearing and hear your input. So thank you again, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I'd like to recognize Senator Canata, and also allow you the floor if you have any questions, comments about Bill 151.
Good morning, thank you guys, thank you panel members, thank you to the general public for joining us today. Certainly, we see the alarming situation of our military presence here. We all, we just need to weigh out both sides of the story. I didn't really get a chance to, you know, hear you guys' testimony physically, and I was attending another event, but I certainly will go back onto the footage and review it and look at the content that was shared. Again, I thank you guys for your presence this morning, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Canata. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on Bill 151 before we close? Okay, yes, Mr. McNinch.
Thank you, Senator Perez, and certainly thank you, senators. Earlier, I said that I had opposed the bill, and also I encouraged the governor to veto the bill. So that was the substance of my statements, and the main reason is I view a lot of the reasoning and logic behind the stated purpose of the bill as being primarily ideological, and it conflate, they conflate quite a number of things. But in general, that would be my opposition, that more, a more thoughtful process needs to be used for this kind of policy. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Menno, yes, you're recognized. Thank you for being here.
I don't know how much, on the language that we speak, you can understand in Tamara, or I will say it in English. I am very elated, Senators Roy, Canata, and Senator Perez, and Senator Brown, Sidesas-Mossi. I vote in favor of this for one reason, I like to see a better solution on our, like electricity, water, you know. But I oppose totally for Northern Marianas, Palau, or anywhere to dump their waste in the Pacific Ocean.
Sorry, Mr. Menno, this is for Bill 151. Did you want to provide testimony for Resolution 93?
No, I'm going to go, I'm going to oppose it.
Yeah, sorry, Yacine and my Bilhaur not dumping.
No, but what I'm reading on, you know, but let me just finish. I support the senators, whatever they come up with. However, I am very careful to really understand where you're, where are we going, this island, through your leadership. That was my point, Senator. Whatever is good for the people of Guam, that is what I want. Sidesas-Mossi.
Sidesas-Mossi, Mr. Menno, for that. And yes, my concern is the health and safety of our people and the environment, which is why I proffered this bill, considering that we've had a history of impacts from nuclear contamination. And so, what we can do, what we control is, you know, what we can control is how we produce our energy, and to ensure that it doesn't include nuclear power, I think that's one simple measure that we can do to protect the health of our people. So, thank you so much. And is there anybody else before I close? Okay, yeah, again, oh, sorry, yes. Did you sign in? Or, yeah, if you can state your name.
Hi, my name is Tori Manley, and I just have a question. Since I didn't thoroughly go over the bill, I just saw that there would be no nuclear waste or the implementation of nuclear power here, and I'm just for that so much, so thank you so much for introducing that. I want, in light of your testimony, it cultivated a question, which I think, I'm not sure if it covers this, would the military or any other entity be able to transport nuclear, like, instruments of weapons, like separately, as you've said before? Is there a scope with, around our island and the Marianas where they're not allowed to transfer, or they're not allowed to have something built off-island in order to go around it?
So, that's beyond my expertise, but what this bill would do, basically Guam controls what happens within its footprint on land, so we, you know, unfortunately, we don't control the parts where DoD's bases are, and I believe we control three nautical miles outward. That doesn't include waters adjacent to the bases. So this bill impacts the areas that the territory of Guam has control over. But perhaps I could defer the question to Administrator, do you have any additional information on that?
I do not, Senator, unfortunately.
Okay, so, yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, the bill doesn't affect the DoD-controlled lands and waters, but it does affect what our territory does.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, we are going to close. Of course, we will still accept testimony for Bill 151-37. So the date we have advertised is the September 8th, a Friday. Committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 p.m. But before I close, I would like to just add a couple of closing remarks. So the purpose of this bill was to protect, is to protect the health and safety of our people and environment from the inherent dangers of harboring nuclear energy on an island within a disaster-prone region. Our island is too small, and our water and land's too precious to risk the cataclysmic effects that even a small nuclear accident can bring. Production and use of nuclear energy pose substantial logistical problems for our island, as we have no means to safely and satisfactorily dispose of spent nuclear fuel and associated radioactive waste. Given the size and geography of our home, we cannot designate an area for nuclear-related activity that is safely away from our population. We live in a prone, a region prone to natural disasters such as typhoons and earthquakes that are only exacerbated by the ongoing effects of climate crisis, and these natural characteristics of our island and region only add to the precariousness of nuclear energy production and use on Guam. The impetus, the bill is an impetus to critically address the issue of nuclear microreactors, and it gives the community and local experts an opportunity to voice their concerns. In many instances, regarding the protection of our people and environment, the decision-making processes do not prioritize the input and needs of our community, and this bill does, ensuring that our collective voice is a key point in the decisions made about our future. In an era of climate crisis and rapid overdevelopment, we cannot afford to compromise the health of our environment and people through continued nuclear energy production and use. We need to genuinely produce sustainable solutions that center on the rights and well-being of our island community and our natural resources. As the first stewards of our homeland, we must take care that our future is not to be built on risk, but on responsible innovation for a sustainable future. And so, I would like to now take a moment's recess as we move on to the next item of our agenda. So, thank you, everybody, for being here. So we're going to be in a moment's recess, we're going to have a new panel for the next item, Resolution 9337. Sidesas-Mossi.